I call this meeting of the Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Ms. Cavill.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowicz.
Here.
Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. At this time, our recommended action is to go into closed session. And the recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body, matter pertaining to an individual student, collective negotiation, negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, and appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. If there's any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowicz.
Aye.
The recommended action is that the Board of Education return to open session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowicz.
Aye.
All right, would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That will bring us to our recognition, and I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Small.
Thank you. Mr. Eric Winkowski, come forward. As the Director of Athletics and Activities, he has some wonderful coaches and very successful athletes to introduce to us tonight.
Board of Education and Dr. Small, thank you for taking some time to honor some talented swimmers and a runner. Athletes, as your coach introduces you, please walk forward, receive your award, and stand next to the podium. Additionally, any family members that are here with their athlete should stand and be recognized when we initially introduce your coach. Assisting with the awards tonight are Palatine High School Principal Tony Medina and Athletic Director Luis Arroyo, Fremd Principal Mark Langer and Athletic Director David Dick, and Schaumburg Principal Brian Harland and Athletic Director Marty Manning. So we'll get started with Palatine Cross Country.
Okay, and before we begin, I just need to remind everyone that you do need to be wearing a mask, and the mask needs to be covering your nose and your mouth. If we have individuals that are not complying, they will have to be asked to leave.
Okay, we'll get started. Joe Parks. Joe Parks is a wellness and driver education teacher at Palatine High School, and has been the head cross country coach for 13 years. His teams have qualified for the state meet 12 out of the last 13 years, and he's brought home three state trophies, including the state title in 2009. In total, 14 of Joe's athletes have earned all-state finishes. Joe?
All right, thank you. I just want to start off by thanking Dr. Small and the board for allowing us to recognize all these hardworking, dedicated student athletes tonight. I also want to thank our principal, Mr. Medina, and Athletic Director, Mr. Arroyo, for their support of our program. I also want to thank my assistant coach back in the back, Mike Nelliacchio, for all of his tireless work for our program as well. I'm going to recognize and have him come on up, Mason Craig Jr. at Palatine. And he's here tonight with his parents, Jennifer and Scott. After 14 years as a part of the girls' program at Palatine, I had an opportunity with the resignation of previous coach Chris Quick to take over the boys' program. And I was very fortunate to have Mason making that transition much easier. As we went into the season, kind of two of our focuses that we had was what we call control the controllables, which was, and our big focus was, focus on controlling our effort and our attitude. And another one was, when you come to practice, don't be selfish. Think about what you can do to help your teammates. And Mason was really a big example. Primary reason for our team's success was him believing in our philosophy and trusting us. And he helped lead us to an MSL title this year. Qualified to state as a team for the first time in five years. And we finished top 10 in the state for the first time in 10 years as a boys' program. Individually, Mason established himself as one of the elite runners in the state. He was an MSL conference, all-conference. He was a top-five regional medalist, a top-10 sectional medalist. And he was the 21st finisher in all-state in the state meet this fall. And all these are great accomplishments. Probably what I'm most proud about Mason was his leadership and really his resiliency. Mason got sick after being our top runner most of the year. He got sick about midway through the year, missed the meet, missed a full week of practice, and then came back and ran our conference meet and helped us win. He was our third runner that day, which was not where he had been running. And I know that he was a little worried, it was getting late in the season, on his ability to potentially earn an all-conference, or an all-state medal, which I know he was working towards. But Mason did what he really did all year. He just put his head down, he trusted us, he did the work. And I was so proud and happy that he was able to reach that goal. So I'm fortunate that he's only a junior. I get to coach him track this season. And I've got three more seasons between track and cross country. And I believe with his leadership and effort, hopefully we'll be back here next year with the whole team and a state trophy. So that's the goal. So, thank you.
Okay. Before we begin our girls' swimming, I will ask our police officer if he will talk with the lady in the far corner to please put on her mask and keep her nose and mouth covered. If not, then she will have to be escorted out of the building. Keep going in the far corner.
All right. We'll continue on now with Andrew Kittrill. Andrew has been the wellness teacher at Fremd High School since 2010, where he currently also serves as the Wellness Department Chair. Andrew's been the girls' swimming and diving coach at Fremd for the last 12 years. Two of his teams have been sectional champs, and one of his teams finished in the top 10 in the IHSA Championship. Andrew?
Thank you very much for having me. Very much I'd like to talk about these two wonderful young people up here. First up, could I introduce Q Janae? Q is joined tonight by her mother Nancy. She's had an outstanding year in diving this year, breaking the pool records from the six dive event at Fremd and at Schaumburg. At sectionals this year, Q qualified for the state meet and placed third. At the state finals, Q ended up finishing ninth, just three points out of the top six finishes. Q's score will allow her to be considered for an All-American status this spring. And the best part is, she's a freshman. Next up, could I introduce Katie Keane? Katie is joined tonight by her parents Bill and Patty and her grandparents Bob and Natalie. This year, Katie excelled in the sprint freestyle events, breaking pool records in the 50 free at Palatine and at Barrington. At sectionals, Katie qualified for the state meet in both the 50 and the 100 free, becoming the sectional champion in the 50 free. Katie then placed eighth in the 50 free at the state meet and seventh in the 100 free at the state finals, and will be considered for an All-American status this spring. And she's a sophomore. These two wonderful young people are exemplary young leaders who not only display a great deal of character, but are two of our most unselfish and hardest-working athletes on the team. We are thrilled to continue to have more time with them over the next few years and look forward to sharing their future accomplishments with all of you soon. Thank you very much for having us.
All right, and our final group tonight is the Fremd girls' swim team. I'm going to bring up Tim O'Grady. Tim is in his sixth year teaching. Schaumburg, I'm sorry. That was just Fremd, I'm sorry. Schaumburg, please. And I've got a whole bunch of people here from Schaumburg who are really ready to tell me that. Didn't let that one slip by, did you? Okay. Tim O'Grady is in his sixth year teaching math at Schaumburg High School. For each of those six years, Tim has served as both the boys' and girls' head swim coach. Come on up here, Tim, thanks.
Thank you so much. First, I'd like to congratulate Coach Cutrell, Katie, Q, on your performances this year. We know how much hard work goes behind the scenes to get where you are, and it's been a pleasure competing with you, and we had so much fun sharing for you guys at the state meet. The following five girls combined to achieve a 13th place finish at this year's state meet. I can speak for all the teachers here that these five girls are some of the best student leaders at Schaumburg and District 211. These five do not only work hard in the pool, but in all facets in life. First, we have Annabelle Bannetts, who is joined with her parents, Zolt and Andrea. Annabelle is a current pool and school record holder in the medley relay and 200 free relay. She is also the conference record holder in the 200 medley relay. Annabelle is all-conference with a conference championship in the medley relay, all-state swimmer in the medley relay with an 11th place finish at the state meet. Annabelle has received consideration for All-American worth of performance in the medley relay. Next, we have Danielle Alley with her parents, Julie and Mike Alley. Danielle has served as an excellent team captain for the Saxon Swim Team during her senior year. Danielle is a current pool and school record holder in the 400 free relay. Danielle is an all-state swimmer in the 400 free relay with a 12th place finish at the state meet. Next, we have Susanna Kresnicki with her parents, Agnieszka, Mai, and Robert Kresnicki. Susanna is the current record holder in the 50 free, school record holder in the 50 free. She is the current pool and school record holder in the medley relay, 200 free relay, and the 400 free relay, and a conference record holder in the medley relay. Susanna is an all-conference swimmer with a conference championship in the medley relay and an all-sectional swimmer with her sectional championship in the 100 free. Susanna is also an all-state swimmer in the medley relay with an 11th place finish and an all-state swimmer in the 400 free relay with a 12th place finish. Susanna has received consideration for an All-American time with her performance in the medley relay. Okay, here we go. Next is Maddie Dorn. Maddie is here with her parents, Thad and Stephanie Dorn. Maddie is the current pool and school record holder in the medley relay, 200 free relay, and 400 free relay, and the 100 backstroke. She is also the conference record holder in the medley relay and the 100 backstroke. Maddie is an all-conference swimmer with championships in the medley relay and the 100 backstroke. She is also an all-sectional swimmer with championships in the 200 free and the 100 back. Maddie is an all-state swimmer in the medley relay with an 11th place finish at the state meet and a 12th place finish in the 400 free relay, and she receives second place in the 100 backstroke. Her second-place finish in the 100 backstroke at the state meet is ranked the 14th fastest performance in the state's history. Maddie has already received an All-American recognition last year for her performance in the 100 backstroke and will once again be considered for an All-American this year for her performance in the 100 back and medley relay. And finally, we have Nina Mullen. Nina is here with her parents, Tomo and Chad Mullen. All right, here we go. Nina is the current pool and school record holder in the 200 free, 100 free, 200 free relay, and the 400 free relay. Nina is the current pool and school record holder in the 200 medley relay, 200 individual medley, 100 butterfly, 500 free, 100 breaststroke, and 400 free relay. Nina is a conference record holder in the 200 medley relay, 200 IM, and the 100 fly. Nina is an all-conference swimmer with championships in the medley relay, 200 IM, and 100 fly. Nina is an all-sectional swimmer with championships in the 200 IM and 500 free. She is also an all-state swimmer with a 12th place finish in the 400 free relay and an 11th place finish in the 200 medley relay. And she is also all-state in the 500 free with a 12th place finish and also an all-state swimmer in the 200 IM with a second-place finish this year at the state meet. Her second-place finish at the state meet is ranked the fourth fastest performer in the event in the state's history. Nina has received All-American recognition last year for her performance in the 200 IM. She will be once again considered for All-American for her performance in the medley relay and the 500 free, and she is automatically qualified for All-American status for her performance in the 200 IM at this year's state meet. Congratulations, girls.
Will Dr. Brian Lozaro please come forward from the Higgins Education Center and introduce your student?
Wow, congratulations to all those students, my goodness. Hi, I'm Brian Lozaro, District 211 School Psychologist at the Higgins Education Center, Academy South Therapeutic Program. It is a privilege for us to stand before you all this evening to present to you one of our most successful students this year, Brandon Weinstein. Before I talk about Brandon's accomplishments, I'd like to thank our two Jessicas. Jessica Orsted, our fearless Higgins Education Center Administrator, who is here tonight, and Jessica Medina, Special Education Department Chair at Fremd High School, who is also here, who have both supported Brandon along the way. And now for our man of the hour. This year, Brandon was the recipient of the National Association of School Psychologists Student Power Award at Academy South. A power award recipient is a student who has put forth great effort in the school community to make an exceptional difference in their own life by achieving personal goals. This recipient is someone who is optimistic, he will succeed, willing to solve problems, eager to do his best, and reaches out to others. Brandon exemplified all of these great qualities. Before Brandon came to us, he was not attending school. Brandon turned this around and inspired students and the staff by increasing his attendance to 95%. Brandon recognized he needed to make a change, and he put these thoughts into action. He has successfully overcome the many personal challenges in his life. Brandon is currently one of our highest students at school and just recently earned his way back to Fremd High School for several classes. Brandon, your father would be very proud of you. Congratulations, Mrs. Weinstein, and congratulations, Brandon, on your award.
And Mrs. Weinstein, will you say something? Congratulations.
Congratulations, Brandon.
Congratulations. All right. Thank you. Before we move on, I'd like to again recognize all of our students for the athleticism, for the academics. It's not easy, it takes a lot of time, a lot of dedication. Thank you to the parents for supporting your students, both for the different sports, for being there, and for the academics and supporting them in school. We are going to pause for just a few minutes so we can have some pictures taken of our students, and then we will, the parents can then leave with the students, which will allow some seating for the rest of the individuals that are here, because currently we are at capacity. So at this time, we'll take a short pause, and we'll be directed in how we're going to do the pictures. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, there's some seats over here if you'd like to have a seat. So please come on in. There's some seats over to my right. Again, please come on in so we can close the door. There's some seats on the right, to my right. And once again, a reminder that we are following the state mandate. The masks need to be worn, covering the nose and the mouth, please. All right. At this time, we'll begin our public comments and a few reminders. The board welcomes you, and we're pleased to listen to your comments. This evening, it's important that you know that this is a public board meeting and not a dialogue, so the board members will not be responding to your comments or answering your questions. As a reminder, the board meeting is being taped and livestreamed. We ask that you value the procedures and decorum of our meeting and be respectful of those at the podium so they may be heard. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium, state your name for the record. Though not required, you may state if you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to five minutes. We have 11 people signed up, so we can do the five minutes. You will receive a notification when you have one minute remaining. Any individual's unused time or place in the order may not be deferred to another individual. If you wish a response from the superintendent, please leave your name and phone number with Mr. Tennyfer at the end of the desk. I will ask that everyone please be respectful. This is a board meeting. I will ask that you not be aggressive, or overly aggressive, or disruptive behavior, because it will not be tolerated. Please state your comments, you know, to the board. Do not direct them at an individual, please. And we ask that you... But we ask that you follow our procedures and decorum of our meeting. So our first person to speak is Tom Dempsey, followed by Maria Gallo. Mr. Dempsey?
Good evening. My name's Tom Dempsey. I'm a longtime 211 resident, parent, grandparent. I was actually here at your October meeting, and at that time, I wanted to bring a message of support and encouragement to the board. I know it's difficult times in schools and especially on school boards. So like the vast majority of my friends and neighbors, I wanted you to know that we appreciate living in a community that's got such a great school district. The speaker immediately after me kind of dramatically dropped a lawsuit on the dais at that meeting, and, you know, I left thinking, well, that's exactly what we don't need. We've got district resources already stretched extremely thin due to the pandemic. To have to spend time, effort, resources, money defending a lawsuit just seems like the very wrong thing to me. And, you know, it's really unfortunate that political groups are using school board meetings for an agenda that really has nothing to do with kids. Myself, I'm not here representing any group, political party. I'm not speaking for anyone, but I do want to speak for my grandkids. I have four of them. Two of them are soon going to be at Connet, so I'm here representing them. They've actually done fairly well during the pandemic. They've been adaptable, and it's kind of amazing how well they've done despite all of the trauma that's going on in the world around them. My family is an extended family, is grandparents, parents. What we've tried to do is support them, fill in the gaps, acknowledge the disruptions, acknowledge how crazy it is, but try to help them move forward in every way that we can. And one of those ways is supporting their school and their teachers and their administration. It's definitely tough. Nobody loves wearing these masks. I don't either. But they're vaxxed, they're masked, they've been healthy, and we've gotten through it. So as I said in October, a lot of the situations that the school is dealing with are completely out of your control. You didn't make these situations, and you're having to do the best that you can. But it's really disruptive to any child when their parent and their school appear to be at odds. I mean, just like kids in a difficult situation, if the parents are divorcing, you know, it's traumatic, it's disruptive, and it does nothing for their education. Since that October meeting, the last time I was here, I can't tell you how many people have died. At every age group, adults, kids, people in between. A new variant sprung up because we didn't do a very good job eradicating the old variant when we had a chance. Not enough people did the right things. The doctors, the nurses, they were trying to tell us, mask and vax, and maybe we can get through this. Not enough people listened, and more people died since then. But it's not just those people that got sick. The effect on the nurses and the doctors, who've been meeting their heads against the wall for two years, trying to get us to do the right thing. They're demoralized, they're leaving their profession, they're burnt out. I don't want the same thing to happen to educators and to teachers, or policemen, or firefighters, or any of the other people who do these necessary jobs for us. I'm a long-term educator, I'm retired now. It wasn't easy when I started in this field about 48 years ago. It's only gotten harder, but to have all of the political conflict ending up on the school doorstep is very unfortunate. So, you know, I'm just really hoping that we can kind of all put some of this stuff behind us and start to pull together a little bit. So once again, I really want to thank you as a board. I admire people who are rolling through these difficult circumstances and doing the best you can. Like most other people in this community, I'm very happy for the school district that we have. I don't want the same thing to happen to teachers that has happened to policemen, to nurses, to doctors, et cetera, with all of the politics that's landed on their doorstep. So that's the view, I believe, from most of the residents here. So please keep up doing the good work, and we want to thank you for your service.
Maria Gallo. And followed by Tracy Boland.
Hi, my name is Maria Gallo, and I am a taxpayer of District 211. I've been coming to these meetings since the summer, and one of my favorite parts of the meetings is when you do the student or the teacher recognition. That's when I get to see all the excellence, the excellent job that you're doing and these excellent students, the student athletes. I remember in the fall coming, and you must have had 100 National Merit Scholars coming through with their parents. And as they stood there, I said to one dad, you know, "Congratulations." And he beamed ear to ear, and he said, "This is our future." And it is. And we should all be proud of this robust and challenging education that you are giving to our students in District 211. Clearly, the administration and the faculty and the board are doing something right. You're giving all students the opportunity to have an education that will let them pursue their passions to the nth degree. Another thing that the administration and the faculty and the school board are doing right is making sure that students are safe, as safe as can be from COVID-19 and its variants. Students can't achieve excellence if they are sick. They can't get their education if they are stuck at home because they were exposed to the virus at school. They can't focus on their homework if they're taking care of relatives at home who got sick because the student brought the virus home from school. We should all be proud of all of the leaders of our school, the administration and the faculty and the school board, for following the mandates on keeping our students and our families safe. But there's a small number of people who want to push their extreme, anti-science, anti-diversity views on our school and on our community. They are using threats and intimidation to get what they want. These people do not represent our community. These people have no interest in the education of our students. They would rather undermine all of our students' education and all of our students' potential. They would rather undermine all of our students' education and all of our students' potential and future success. We as a community need to stand up to these bullies and stand with our teachers, our administration and our school board. Thank you.
Tracy Boland. Followed by Hillary Krevchenya.
Krevchenia.
Krevchenia.
But I'm Tracy Boland. I'm a resident of District 211. I do not have children in the school. And to Dr. Small and the board, I want to express my gratitude and my admiration to you for everything that you've done to provide an environment where the students and the employees are thriving. It's hard, but we can see that the people in this district are getting by emotionally, intellectually, physically. We're doing it together and I'm so grateful to you for being leaders in our community for that. I'm very proud to live in a school district that has some of the top schools in the state. And I think that's because we have so many committed professional employees at every level of every school in this district. The faculty, the staff, the parents, the students themselves are creating an environment where the students are excelling. And I'm very pleased to think that they're going to be engaged citizens, maybe even leaders locally, at the state, national, international level because of the education that they're receiving here. So again, thank you so much for everything that you're doing to keep our high school system moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Hillary Krevchenia. Followed by Jerry Frida.
Hi, I'm Hillary Krevchenia. No one gets it right the first time. Not even me when I met him. And still I took it. I am a resident of 211 and have a daughter who proudly graduated from this district. So I am grateful to this school board and to this educational system. There's nothing more important than an honest and true education to a real democracy. Only through education is it possible to help young minds grow into real citizens and true patriots. It's possible for good-hearted people to grow without such education. But it is far more possible for this to happen in the rich mix of a learning community that is peers and new friends to discover and of an intelligent, created, honestly, honest, excuse me, honest, truly researched and fact-proven curriculum. The school system that I grew up in, in Rochester, New York, was such a place and it made me love my country, understand our government, respect my teachers, and strive for excellence. Above all, it made me always curious, skeptical, longing for my country to live up to its loftiest aspirations. My children have also grown up in the public school system in Illinois, only one here in District 211, though. They've all emerged as passionate citizens, engaged citizens, one internationally as well as in Washington, D.C. They're voters, skeptics, students of life, and those who believe as a result of their education that this is a nation of, for, and by the people, not just person by person, but the whole colorful mosaic. They were all blessed with teachers who helped to equip them for the world, not as it was too often, narrow, repressive, economically unfair, socially unequal, but as it could be. Fair, open, truly democratic, and economically just to its workers. An example, a shining example to the world. We can be that as a nation. But not when our educational system is under attack ideologically and without ground. Not when we are torn apart ideologically as a nation. Our sense of common ground, I bet that's an expression we don't often hear lately. Our sense of common ground and our respect for education is vital to flourishing into this rapidly progressing world. Only when our education has vision, is honest and respected, can we emerge into that rapidly progressing world with smart, engaged, competent, wise citizens who will work to keep building the common good and defending an honest, true, and real democracy that can shine its grace upon all citizens and crown the good that we make together with brother and sisterhood from sea to shining sea. And it is your work and our work to uphold an education that can form those citizens. And I applaud you for your courage and your time in helping to make that happen. Thank you.
Jerry Frida, followed by Jane Van.
My name is Jerry Frida. I've been a resident of District 211 for 40 years. I've had three kids, four kids. There's one I like to forget sometime, but four kids get a great education through the district and thank you. But there's a big lie that's being pushed here. No, not that one, but one that many of the speakers here have been pushing the last couple of board meetings to imply that they are somehow being persecuted by the federal government. The lie is that Attorney General Merrick Garland labeled parents who complain at school board meetings as domestic terrorists. It never happened. On October 18th, PolitiFact did a fact check and stated, quote, "Have parents who contest school curriculums been labeled domestic terrorists or barred from challenging school curriculums?" The answer, no, unquote. What Garland did do was issue a memo on October 4th directing the FBI to work with state and local officials to brainstorm ways to address, quote, "criminal threats against school administrators, board members, teachers, and staff, and to establish procedures for threat reporting, assessment, and response," unquote. The Justice Department later issued another statement that the effort was, quote, "designed to address the rise in criminal conduct directed towards school personnel," unquote. PolitiFact added that nowhere did the word terrorist appear in either of these statements. PolitiFact also wrote that Garland clearly indicated that parents are welcome to challenge school curriculums or voice opinions that differ from their local school officials. As he stated, quote, "While spirited debate about policy matters is protected under our constitution, that protection does not extend to threats of violence or efforts to intimidate individuals based on their views," unquote. Several people speaking here seem more happy to keep churning the same lie in hope that it will ward off some imaginary tyranny by intimidating the members of this board. Or worse yet, legitimize criminal conduct against the people who work to make District 211 run. Repeating this lie over and over doesn't make it true. Rather, it weakens the ability of this district to function in a rational manner. Hopefully, the people of our community and this board will not be influenced by this charade and will continue to seek reasoned, honest, and fact-based solutions to the 12,000 students of this district. Thank you.
Jane Van. Followed by Mary Sheldon.
My name is Jane Van and I am a member of the Palatine Community. Tonight, I stand before this board and my community to once again speak up regarding the use of masks in our schools. It has been publicized on social media that a specific only male group known for violence and intimidation were going to be present at tonight's meeting to show support for the anti-mask lawsuit that has been brought before our district and other school districts in Illinois. If these individuals are present tonight and reside or pay property taxes in the towns that this school district and its board members represent, your thoughts and words spoken are most welcome. If you don't fit these criteria, your words are not welcome and you should not pretend to speak on behalf of our community. We are in a worldwide epidemic. Scientists are now recommending all wear an N95 or KN95 mask for best protection. If one doesn't have access to this type of mask, surgical or cloth masks can also help in containing the virus. These scientific guidelines are based upon the most recent research. School districts and other institutions may mandate mask-wearing to protect those in their buildings. There is no intrusion on anyone's liberties by mandating masks be worn. If people feel that their civil liberties are being violated by a mask mandate and feel the need to bring this to the courts, I ask, why are courts not filled with lawsuits against public facilities that require shoes to be worn? There is no difference. It is scientifically proven that a mask has no detrimental medical effect on an individual. If there are people present that feel they can intimidate this board and this community to not follow the scientific guidelines, you are wrong.
Mary Sheldon, followed by Joyce Slavic.
I hope you called Mary Sheldon. I couldn't quite hear.
Yes.
Good evening, board members. I am a director of religious education in one of the churches in your district. I'm a Sunday school teacher and a director of Sunday school teachers. And I am really delighted to say to you how pleased I am with the education, the broad-spectrum, open-minded education that our students of every age walk into our Sunday school classrooms with. I appreciate so much the work of this board to protect that broad-spectrum education in a diverse learning environment. And I appreciate so much the work that you have done over this past two years of pandemic to ensure that that education is protected. Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Joyce Slavic, followed by Myrna Frankel.
Hi, my name is Joyce Slavic. I'm a parent in D-211. At last month's board meeting, there was a discussion on the hiring of a district equity officer as part of the equity audit recommendations. Mr. Dombrowski and Mr. Kramer voted against hiring for this position. There was also discussion about increasing the diversity of the staff. During the discussion about increasing staff diversity, Mr. Dombrowski stated, "Up to this point, we've been hiring exceptionally qualified teachers and I want to make sure that doesn't get compromised as part of this initiative." His implication was called on by several other board members. If Mr. Dombrowski had participated in one of last year's equity committees, like the rest of the board members did, he probably would have learned about the concept of microaggression. Microaggression is making statements that are subtle and indirect discrimination against members of a marginalized group such as a racial or ethnic minority. The implication that hiring more diverse staff, be that black, Asian, or gay staff, for example, would mean settling for less rather than in addition to is disturbing and insulting. Per the Illinois Report Card website, D-211 is 88% white staff and 43% white students. The conservative right wing is promoting a well-funded movement to stop diversity programs in American schools by pretending it's about something else, whether that's masks or a theory that is not taught in lower education classes. Because power and privilege doesn't like to give up or give in, and it makes them money. Do not pretend that masks are the issue. While over 800,000 people have died of COVID in the United States and over 5 billion worldwide, our hospital staffs once again are being overrun with unvaccinated people, including a dangerous rise in hospitalized children. From a recent Sun Times article, about 94% of advocates pediatric COVID-19 patients have been unvaccinated and many come from households where no one was vaccinated. About half of their patients hospitalized over the last month were five or younger children, meaning that most of them weren't old enough for a lifesaving shot. It's not just about young children who generally do do better if infected, although not always. It's those children who can affect their families or community members who have other risk factors. By claiming that masks are dangerous and infringing on parental freedom, this conservative movement is purposely pulling in frustrated, uninformed parents to their ultimate cause. You can hear it when parents talk about the wearing of masks with infringing on their freedom and then they move on to talking about the teaching of LGBTQ rights or race in our classrooms. There's a meme going around of a little black girl, Ruby Bridges, going into her newly-integrated school in 1960 surrounded by a group of federal marshals. This brave girl walked past crowds of people screaming vicious racial slurs at her all year long. On the meme, it says, "If this child was strong enough to survive this, your child is strong enough to learn about it." In our community, the racial slurs are not normally screamed out loud. It comes out in the form of microaggressions. Let's just focus on reading, writing, and math. We don't want our white kids to feel guilty about slavery. We need to take books conversation out of our curriculum that might make kids read that parents uncomfortable. I am thankful and proud that our school board, minus the no votes of Mr. Dombrowski and Mr. Kramer, voted to hire a district equity officer. They know that by not hiring this critical role, the program would be diminished and ultimately fail. Having an expert in these policies who's dedicated to supporting our staff across the district is critical to the survival and flourishing of our important equity program. Because promoting truth, honesty, and representation in education raises up all of our students, our community, and our country. Makes us all better and better informed. Equal rights for others does not mean fewer rights for you. It's not pie. You're not being oppressed when another group gains rights that you've always had. Learning about history of groups that are different from you shouldn't make you feel guilty. What should make you feel guilty is ignoring that history and pretending it didn't happen. I did not learn about the Tulsa Race Massacre or Juneteenth in school, and I should have. I do recall seeing a photo of a massive pile of skulls in a concentration camp.
Yeah, one minute remaining.
It was horrific and I never forgot it. It didn't scar me to the point of trauma, but it did make it real what happened in those concentration camps. And as horrible as that photo is and was, I needed to see it and learn about what happened. Our children need to be taught real and honest history in an inclusive curriculum. To the board members, the superintendent, and the teachers of D-211, thank you for your service. Please continue to support the D-211 Equity Program and our community needs to support you. Thank you.
Myrna Frankel. Followed by Dave Pritchard.
Hi, I'm Myrna Frankel. My husband Bob and I live in Schaumburg. We sent our three children to Hoffman Estates High School where they had absolutely fabulous educations. We came to support the board. There was a call out. I got number 117. Thought never in any way am I going to get up here to get to speak, but here I am. I was appalled by hearing the vitriol, the hate that's been directed to you all. You have done and you put in enormous amount of time, effort, without pay. You have the best interest of our students at heart. You have heard, I am just so pleased that every single person tonight has come to support you and your decisions. And my husband and I agree that what you're doing is wonderful. Keep masking. Thank you very much.
Dave Pritchard, followed by Robert Frankel. Dave, I think Dave Pritchard? Have I got the name correct?
Dave's in the back.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me. Are you Mr. Frankel?
I am.
Okay. Dave Pritchard, is he here?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Did you, this gentleman would be before you, sir. I'm sorry.
That's quite all right.
But you do need to put your mask on, and you're welcome to take it off at the microphone to speak.
I am a domestic terrorist, says Attorney General Merrick Garland and the National Education Association, because I have the audacity to speak at school board meetings and engage in peaceful protest rallies under the Bill Rights and the United States Constitution. I am now a target of the Department of Justice's new Domestic Terrorism Unit, started by the illegitimate occupants shuffling around the White House. We domestic terrorists are described as a far greater threat to American security and democracy than foreign terrorists. With respect to the obsession of teachers' unions and the Illinois Education Association around gender pronouns, my pronouns are me, myself, and I. And there are two biological sexes, male and female. We cheered last Saturday when the new Virginia Governor Glenn Youngkin ended mask mandates for public schools, removed gene therapy jab requirements for state workers, and banned the teaching of critical race theory. Yesterday, Governor Youngkin asked all state diversity, equity, and inclusion employees to resign, and tapped anti-critical race theory leader Angela Saylor to head the department. In her first move, Saylor eliminated the word equity and replaced it with opportunity. But we then pinched ourselves and returned to reality. We live in tyrannical Illinois and Crook County, where local unions, the Illinois State Teachers' Union, and leftist politicians and judges have institutionalized and mandated the indoctrination of our children at all educational levels. The destructive diversity, equity, and inclusion racket needs to be extinguished. We call on the superintendent and the 211 School Board to show leadership as the largest high school district in Illinois and abolish the scheme. According to the Heartland Institute, researchers Jay Green and James Paul have just released a series of three carefully crafted studies on DEI that detail many aspects of the harmful racket. In a nutshell, the authors find DEI to be, quote, "counterproductive and politically radical," unquote. The portion of the study examining DEI's effects on elementary schools is particularly damning. It looks at school districts with at least 15,000 students, of which there are 554, and finds that schools with chief diversity officers, or CDOs, quote, "actually have larger gaps in achievement between black and white students, Hispanic and white students, and non-poor and poor students than districts without CDOs." And those gaps are growing wider over time. This pattern holds true even after controlling for host of other observable characteristics of those districts, unquote. The authors explain that gaps occur between CDOs are more focused on promoting a political agenda than they are on finding effective educational interventions, unquote. And that political agenda includes advancing policies that typically exacerbate achievement gaps, such as eliminating gifted programs and advanced math classes, quote, "while selecting English and social studies content for its political orthodoxy rather than educational quality," unquote. This is a high-level summary of a much more comprehensive study that we encourage you to read. We do note a victory last month in Hinsdale District 86 with the withdrawal of a divisive DEI consultant hired by the board. Tonight, we ask you to reject Attorney General Merrick Garland and the National Education Association for calling parents who speak before school boards domestic terrorists, and for those who contend that parents have no right to their children's education. We know the ultimate solution to this situation is to replace school board members in fair and free elections, and we are already working on that for 2023. This is a sick and decadent Illinois, not free Florida or any other red state which are thriving. People are fleeing the state. But for those of us here who have a calling, we stand up and speak out peacefully and patriotically. We call on the superintendent tonight to issue a district-wide edict to stop any and all critical race theory, social, emotional learning, or whatever acronym we use to cover it up, gender shaming and othering, and to eliminate all pornographic and sexual materials, surveys, and gender role-playing in print and video format in D-211. I don't have enough time to go on because of the five-minute rule, but let me just say-
The speaking time has ended.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchard. All right, Mr. Frankel.
Take your mask off.
Okay, please put your mask on if you're going to remain.
Good evening. I was a, just to let you know, I really appreciate what you do. You don't need to abuse. You work hard enough at a non-paying position. I know what it's like. I was served 40 years as a trustee of the Schaumburg Library, and any given month, you did more reading and learning about what went on at your meetings than I did in a year. But that's not the point. Let me go back and give a little bit of history. Some of this before I was born. Vaccines were developed that took care of childhood whooping cough, diphtheria, mumps, measles, and chickenpox. Before that, you either lived through it or you died from it. I never heard of any group, or even an individual, refusing to be vaccinated or having their children vaccinated for this. A little later on, polio vaccine. Does anybody ever remember anybody denying or questioning the need to have everybody vaccinated from polio?
Sir, sir, please.
Nobody. Now, today, we have people who don't care one way or the other how many people they may kill by not getting vaccinated. They only look at what they call freedom, personal freedom. You know, there was a very brilliant Native American chief who once said, "We are born with obligations, not with rights, and you are obligated to do what you can to help other people." The idea that you're only responsible for yourself and care nothing at all about anybody else is an anathema. The only way these people can learn is by going into a, and even then, they don't learn, going into an ICU and a ventilator because they refuse to get vaccinated. They refuse to wear masks. 90% of the people today, or more, that are in the hospital for COVID have not been vaccinated. And the idea that you won't care enough about anybody else in this world to wear a mask is totally irresponsible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our speakers who spoke, and I think one of the messages that really came across is the support of our students, and they are our future, and that is what we're striving to, support them in every way possible. So I thank you to everyone who did comment, whether we agree or disagree. Thank you. At this time, we're going to move on to our fiscal year 2022 budget and five-year financial forecast. So we're going to have our presentation here. And we'll take a moment so people can clear out. We have a presentation on the budget and the five-year financial forecast update. The doors will be closed in just a moment.
Dave, if you could close the doors, please. Thank you. Tonight, Lauren Hummel, Chief Operating Officer, Barb Peterson, Controller and Treasurer, will present the updated financial forecast to prompt the discussion surrounding a potential abatement to the levy that was approved in December and an abatement of the tax recapture levy. If an abatement or change to the amount levied in December of 2021 is going to occur, it must be filed with the county by March 31 of 2022. If this occurs, the new amount levied by District 211 is reflected in the second installment of the 2021 tax bills. The long-range financial planning tonight includes the use of land sale revenue and total budget surplus, the 2021 CPU that's been determined, continuing the planned capital priorities and utilization of funding for additional capital projects, including student auditoriums, PA systems, and HVAC improvements to apply technology, the waiver of student fees, and updated revenue and expenses for FY22. These factors are all a part of tonight's projections and portray the level of risk taken in future years for maintaining fund balances for long-term debt-free financial stability for current and future students.
Thank you, and good evening. Over the past several months, we've presented financial information leading up to the approval of the 2021 levy which took place this past December. At that time, we discussed coming back to the board in January with an updated financial projection, along with scenarios that would utilize a portion of reserves that were obtained through the sale of our 60-acre property and also through reserves achieved through budget surplus. This evening's presentation will provide updated financial information and considerations for use of reserves that will continue to allow the district to maintain adequate resources to meet and support its mission. We'll review a series of topics this evening that all play a role in defining the district's financial position. First, we'll begin with an update on the district's current budget position. We'll then review factors that shape our long-range financial forecast, including the latest release of the CPIU, possible utilization of existing reserves, levy abatement, and other variable conditions that impact the district's five-year financial forecast. So let's begin by taking a look at our current position compared to budget for the current fiscal year. The district has closed its financial records for the first five months of the fiscal year. Overall, while some categories vary from budget, the district is on budget for total revenue with 100% of budgeted revenue received through the end of November. It is estimated that the district will remain favorable in certain categories of revenue, including CPPRT as additional funding has been released, fees and other income resulting from an NSCO refund payment, and categorical aid as reimbursement for special education and transportation is greater than anticipated. Interest earnings are projected to increase in 2022. However, there's still projected that we will remain unfavorable. Federal aid is unfavorable due to the timing of ESAR reimbursement and Title I, or excuse me, entitled grant reimbursements, and other areas of revenue remain close to budget. The district's in a favorable position compared to budget for total expenditures. Capital spending is the primary category of spending that is trending under budget. It is anticipated that spending will increase second semester as projects continue and equipment purchases are received and paid for. Salaries are trending unfavorably due primarily to summer school costs. Utilities are unfavorable compared to budget as building utilization has increased significantly over the prior year. Purchase services are ahead of budget due largely to decreased homeless and special education taxi cab services, and supplies are favorable due primarily to delayed grant budget approval and delayed spending. Overall, the district is in a favorable position compared to budget by roughly 2.5%. So now that we've reviewed our current budget position through November, our presentation will shift to looking at our anticipated financial projection over the next five years. The Consumer Price Index for urban consumers is a measure of economic inflation that is released in January as a measure over the prior 12-month period. CPIU is used in determining the tax cap that's applied to the upcoming levy year under the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, commonly referred to as PTEL. The limiting cap is set at either the lesser of CPIU or 5%. The 2021 CPIU rate was recently released at 7%. Because the rate exceeds 5%, the limiting factor for the 2022 levy, which will be approved next December, will utilize the cap limit of 5%. 5% CPIU is what's used in the financial projections that will be shared this evening. And under PTEL, just as a reminder, any rate that's levied less than the tax cap amount may not be recovered in future years and therefore has an annual compounding effect on the district's tax revenue. Since 2012, the board has made deliberate decisions to utilize funds held in reserve for a number of initiatives to bring reserve levels closer in line with its minimum fund balance threshold. The board achieved this by providing tax relief through numerous initiatives, including providing more than $15 million in abatement since 2012, more in total if we went further back, eliminating its liability, held with IMRF by making additional contributions resulting in savings of more than $1 million per year in employer costs, and paying for numerous facility improvement and life safety projects across the district using reserves rather than debt. While the board's deliberate actions reduced fund balance levels, the district remains in a very strong financial position, operating free of debt with decreased financial liabilities. Over the past two years, fund balance levels have increased from two contributing factors. First, the district sold 62 acres of land and reseeded $17.8 million in land sale proceeds, and the district ended the two prior years with a budget surplus due in part to decreased operating expenses resulting from COVID and the hybrid learning models. Tonight's presentation will discuss consideration for utilization of the reserves that were obtained over the past two years. Before transitioning into the financial projection, I wanted to provide some additional details surrounding some of the considerations that are used in our financial- surrounding some of the considerations that are used in our financial forecasting model. On the agenda for tonight's meeting is a recommendation for student user fees. Over the past two years, the Board has waived select fees for our students, including the student instructional fee. We are again recommending waiver of the $170 instructional fee for students during the 2022-2023 school year. Waiver of these fees results in more than $1.3 million of revenue that would not be collected. As I previously mentioned, the district has seen an increase in fund balance reserves over the, levels over the past two years. The increase is due to the sale of the land generating again $17.8 million and an additional $18 million from the combined surplus over the, the two fiscal years. The unanticipated school closure beginning in March 2020 and subsequent year of hybrid learning yielded lower spending across numerous areas, which resulted in a surplus budget position. Tonight's financial forecast will discuss two primary considerations for utilization of recently accumulated reserves. We will review various levy abatement scenarios and considerations for additional facility improvement projects. It's important to note that in all of our financial forecasting and recommendations, we review the district's financial position to ensure that any considerations discussed will allow us to maintain offerings for our students, including robust opportunities and a comprehensive instructional program as our top priorities. The district has been completing numerous facility improvement projects that have been identified in the Board's strategic plan over the past several years. The projects that are listed here are not in that plan and would utilize reserves as the funding source. Our student auditoriums have had minimal updates since their original creation and are one of our most utilized spaces in our schools. This has become increasingly true over the past two years as they provide a larger space for our students to social distance, including being used as an alternate eating location. As a part of our strategic plan, the district contracted with a firm to conduct an auditorium study in which we had results that provided us with recommendations to improve our existing audiums and auditoriums, including acoustical improvements, lighting, stage, and curtain improvements, and modernization of our seating and finishes. Additionally, our schools all have a recommended plan to improve the ADA accessibility for students onto the stage as well as additional ADA accessibility within our spectator seating. The estimated cost for these projects across all five schools is $12 million. Second, the replacement of our public address or PA system is another area that is in a state of increasing frequency of repair. Replacement of these systems is critical to maintain the safety and security of the communication systems and processes within our buildings. We would be looking at integrating all of the systems to improve the messaging capabilities and replacing those across all five schools against an estimated cost of about $3 million. And finally, the last recommendation would be to add cooling to the remaining applied technology classrooms. These classrooms are very difficult to regulate from a temperature standpoint in the warmer months and may even require movement of students to alternate spaces within our schools. Additionally, these classrooms often house numerous computer labs and other equipment that benefit from climate-controlled environments. Overall, the estimated cost to add this cooling across our, the remaining spaces would be about $3 million. So the second area of consideration for utilization of reserves would be an abatement to the 2021 levy. We'll go into some of the assumptions that are used in this forecast later on in the presentation, but for the purpose of this slide, I'd like to focus on the various abatement considerations. In all scenarios, the only variable that is changing is the 2021 abatement amount. All scenarios include utilization of $18 million toward the facility improvements that were mentioned on the prior slide, and full abatement of the recapture levy, which we'll again talk about in just a moment. Under scenario number one, we demonstrate no levy abatement. In this scenario, the 2021 levy remains at the approved amount from last month of 1.6% over the prior year, and the ending fund balance is 44.5% for our operating funds and 38, just over 38% for our educational fund. Under scenario two demonstrates what a 1.5 million dollar abatement would look like. Under this scenario, the district reduces its 2021 levy by 1.5 million dollars to an overall increase of .95% over the prior year amount. By the end of the five years, the fund balance is estimated at 41.7% for our operating funds and 38% for the educational fund. And finally, in scenario three, the abatement consideration is a $3 million abatement. Under, under this scenario, the district reduces its 2021 levy by $3 million to an overall increase of .3% over the prior year. This abatement would reduce the district's tax revenue by $3 million in fiscal year 23 and every year thereafter. By the end of five years, the operating fund balance is estimated at 39% and again 38% for the educational fund. The 2021 levy discussion this past fall, we had numerous conversations about new legislation that passed which requires the county to automatically add on a supplemental levy that recaptures taxes that were levied the prior year by the Board but were lost by way of refund. These refunds could have occurred through tax objection complaint, certificates of error, or by a property tax appeal board decision. For District 211, this levy amount is $4.1 million for the current year. Without any necessary action by the Board, the $4.1 million is added to the levy amount approved last month. The recapture levy is not subject to PTAL and therefore does not compound whether levied or abated. For the purpose of the financial projection, we show the levy, the full abatement of the recapture levy.
Next, let's discuss the financial impact to the taxpayer of the three scenarios Lauren presented earlier. In the first scenario, there is no abatement to the 2021 levy that the Board passed earlier last month. However, the recapture levy of almost $4.2 million is abated in full. This abatement will result in savings to the homeowner of a $350,000 home in Palatine of $53. Since the abatement of the recapture levy is not subject to PTAL, this abatement will not impact future tax years. In scenario two, we again rebate the full recapture levy and also abate the 2021 levy by the amount of $1.5 million. This will save the average homeowner $73 in the 2021 tax year. Because this abatement of the 2021 levy is a permanent reduction to the tax base, the homeowner's taxes in every future year will be $20 less than they would have been without the abatement. And in scenario three, the 2021 levy is abated by $3 million in addition to the recapture levy. This will save the homeowner $92 for the 2021 tax year and $39 there, every year thereafter. So far, I've been talking about the impact to the individual tax owner. Now let's switch our focus to the column on the far right highlighted in yellow, which is the total tax dollar relief. In each scenario, the impact of the recapture abatement is the same, $4.2 million for one year only. The Board may choose to abate future year recapture levies, but that will be an independent decision each year and will impact that tax year only. However, the abatement of the 2021 tax levy will have a permanent impact on our tax basis, thus reducing the maximum tax levy each year into the future, providing tax relief in all future years. In scenario one, there is no abatement, so there's no future tax relief. In scenario two, reducing the basis by $1.5 million this year will reduce the maximum future levy in all subsequent years by this amount, growing at the rate of CPI. Over five years, this will grow to almost $8 million in tax relief. Similarly, in scenario three, the $3 million abatement will grow to almost $16 million over five years. Coupled with the one-time abatement of the recapture levy, the overall savings to the taxpayer over five years is over $20 million, more than the land sale proceeds. Abating the tax levy is a big decision, and let me clarify my use of the words tax levy on this slide. I'm referring to the abatement of the general 2021 levy, not the recapture levy. On the pros side, an abatement of this nature will provide permanent year-over-year relief to the taxpayers. It's also easy to execute by passing a Board resolution. On the flip side, an abatement will reduce permanently the fund balance or savings which may be available for education, operations, or the unknown. An abatement is a permanent reduction of the levy basis and depending on the amount of the abatement, may cause an erosion of fund balance levels. Should we reach a balance, fund balance level of 33% or less in the future, by Board policy, we will need to take action to raise our fund balance levels. This could be challenging and expensive. If too much money is abated, the financial stability of the district could be at risk. Abatement of this nature will impact all future years and needs to be carefully considered. Our assumptions in the five-year forecast are divided into three categories. In the first column, our assumptions that are fixed or are not likely to change. We know the 2021 levy has been passed with a CPI of 1.4%. We assume we will not incur debt over the next five years, we will not change our fund balance policy, we will complete the remaining projects in our life safety study, state and federal funding will continue at similar levels, and the Palatine TIF payments committed by the, by the village will continue on schedule. In the middle column, our assumptions are variable and may be subject to Board approval. The levy for 2022 will be capped at a CPI of 5%, and while that is a known fact, we do assume that we will pass the levy in the full amount of this 5% increase. We do not know CPI for the other years of the forecast, we are assuming 2% in each of these years. We assume operating expenses will continue at rates consistent with past trends, we will fund all of our capital improvements through budget and reserves, we assumed no TIF extensions with the exception of the downtown Palatine TIF. And the last column of assumptions are subject to further review and Board approval. We will use the reserves for additional facility improvements, as Lauren discussed earlier. We assume student fees are waived not only next year but in all years. We assumed a new life safety study would be approved for fiscal year 2026. Once the ESER funding ends in 2025, we will not continue to carry these ESER-type of expenditures into the future. We assume the recapture levy is abated every single year in full, and that the 2021 levy will be abated in the amount of $3 million. After salaries and benefits, capital improvements are the next largest expense of the district in our five-year forecast. This is a list of the remaining open items in our 10-year capital plan. All of these have been accounted for in the model you will see tonight. Major products, projects include the renovation of Palatine, Connet, and Frum's locker rooms, Frum's kitchen, and Palatine and Frum bathrooms. Significant pieces of aging mechanical equipment and roofs are scheduled to be replaced over the next five years. Classrooms and labs will be renovated and redesigned to provide flexible and up-to-date learning spaces. At the bottom of this slide are additional products, projects to be funded by additional reserves, as Lauren discussed earlier, including auditorium improvements with ADA accessibility, and new public address systems, and HVAC upgrades and additions. These recommendations are subject to Board approval. The projects discussed on the previous slide translate into dollars and cents as follows. Major capital improvements, the bathroom and locker room remodels and such are budgeted at about $10 million of year, depending on the scope of the work to be completed. Life safety projects in our current study are winding down. You'll see in fiscal year 2025, we have nothing budgeted for life safety projects as we prepare for our next life safety study to be approved by the Regional Board of Education. While it is customary for our district to prepare a life safety study about every seven years, it is only required every 10 years. However, stretching out the timeline of the survey might not necessarily correlate to stretching out the expenses. The next line is our routine O and M projects such as paving, mechanical replacements, carpet and window treatment upgrades, and this is consistently budgeted at $5 million. And finally, the additional projects for $18 million that we have been discussing tonight will be spread over four years pending Board approval. This slide summarizes the levies, assumptions in the five-year forecast. The first column shows how the levy stands right now. Last month, the Board approved the 2021 levy in the amount of $245 million, representing a 1.6% increase over the prior year. The recapture levy is automatically added by Cook County and does not require Board approval. The forecast model presented tonight includes abatement of the 2021 levy in the amount of $3 million, and abatement of the recapture levy in full. This results in a total levy of .3% above last year's levy. This is our five-year forecast with the assumptions presented. As you can see, the numbers circled at the bottom. Our fund balance percentages are projected to decline over the period but remain above the policy minimum of 33%. Now let's look at the line in the middle of the schedule, the little budget surplus deficit. There are some big red numbers here that might look a bit scary, but these are planned deficits. They are intentional with the purpose of decreasing our fund balance levels over time. And the last thing I want to point out is the reddish area across the top. Note the CPI and abatement assumptions for each year. We are assuming that for the 2022 levy year, which will impact the financial statements in 2024, we will levy the maximum allowable increase of 5%. Using a CPI assumption of anything less than 5% quickly reduces the fund balance and does not produce such favorable results in our modeling. We are in a solid financial position and are pleased to recommend some significant relief to our family and businesses in our community. We are recommending full abatement of the $4.1 million recapture levy, as well as a $3 million abatement of the 2021 levy recently filed. In addition, we are recommending the Board waives the 2023 school year instructional fee for all students, resulting in an additional $1.3 million in relief. We are confident that all of this can be accomplished without compromising the excellence of the education and programs provided to our students. As you can see here, our fund balance percentages will decline over the next five years, approaching the minimum required by policy but not reaching it. We are not asking you to take action tonight with regards to the recommended abatements, but we did want to give you a timetable for this. At the February Board meeting, if necessary, we can have further discussion on the abatement scenarios. At the March meeting, we will be presenting further detail on our facility improvement plans and asking that you take action at that time regarding the abatements for the 2021 levy year and recapture levy. The last day to file the abatements in Cook County for 2021 is March 31st. Thank you for your time this evening on this important topic, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Dobrowski?
I have quite a few. The first question I have is, this recapture abatement of $4.1 million, we have in our budget every year, year after year, we've had the administration come to us and say, "We have to challenge these PTAB rebates because it, it has a significant impact." And now we have a state mechanism to basically recover these PTAB rebates that have impacted our district significantly, and we're willing to walk away from that. So we're basically saying, "We're going to pay the rebate of $4.1 million, and then as the district is eligible to be made whole, we're going to not take advantage of that." Yet, we've spent over $1.3 million on attorneys to challenge, and in fact, our consent agenda has an item in there that, that defines that pretty clearly, where we're going back and we're paying attorneys to basically fight small businesses and other established entities in our community when they seek relief from errors or over assessments. So I'm, I'm kind of confused with regard to the PTAB rebates. Is, is the money that, that we're trying to capture year after year significant or not? Because according to this presentation, we should be able to rebate it because it doesn't have a significant impact on our budgets year after year. have a significant impact on our budgets year after year.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. The, through the district's intervention process with the property tax appeals, we have had a success rate of about 50% savings or avoided refunds through our intervention in those cases. So absent our intervention, that number goes up for not only our district but the other taxing bodies within our community. And whether other taxing bodies or our district continue to abate, that is additional burden that's placed on, that shifted back to other taxpayers other than the one that's appealing their, their taxes. So it allows us an opportunity to prevent additional evidence into a case to try and preserve the tax base. We, what I would say, when we are reviewing those cases, it is not in opposition to someone paying the fair amount of taxes. It is us trying to have information that is assuring that properties are assessed properly so that everyone within the community is paying the adequate amount of taxes relative to the tax base. The cost for the intervention, I believe that number goes back into the late 90s, so there is a cost to intervening, I do recognize that. But the million dollars has been spent since, I think it was 97 or 98, in intervening in those cases. So this is an opportunity. Certainly, we have a consistent number of refunds that are issued, and we have budgeted for those. I think we've seen fairly consistent despite our, our information that was shared with us last year regarding anticipated decreases in our property tax collections, we have been fairly consistent year-over-year, and we are at a place where for this year, we are recommending that that abatement would take place.
And I just want to clarify, you said this is an additional burden, but really, the recapture levy is just maintaining the tax burden that was passed by the district and keeping us whole. It's not applying an additional burden to the community, it's just redistributing it, which may be perceived as an additional burden, but it's the same burden that was passed by this board, correct?
It's the same dollar amount, the distribution among taxpayers would be different. So if there is a large-
But we don't control that distribution, correct?
We do not. What we, again, it would be relative to, so if there is a large refund that we allow to be applied as presented without, and again, you know, just for sake of conversation, if it's a $100,000 refund, we would typically preserve 50,000 of that. That's 50,000 that would have been allocated to that one individual property that is now shifted among all of the remaining properties within.
Which is just a correction, because when we apply our levy, it should have been distributed that way in the first place, and all that the process does is clarify the distribution and correct it. Because, because when we levy $100,000, it gets distributed, and if somebody contests their $5,000 portion, we're just being, you know, they may get a rebate of $5,000 from us, but then the recapture gives that $5,000 back to us to hold 100,000, correct? So we're not putting any additional burden on anyone, we're just maintaining the levy that we passed as a board.
The, the collection to the district would be as the, the board passed.
Exactly.
Yes, but the-
Right.
But you as an individual taxpayer would pay a different amount than you would have otherwise.
So basically, abating the recapture levy is admitting that we overtaxed in the levy in the first place.
Cap?
No, I, at this point, what we are recommending is that based upon our position this year, that the abatement take place for that, for that recapture levy, because we collected the amount of tax that we had budgeted.
Right, and then based on actions at the county level, we returned because we had to rebate it because it was incorrectly assessed to those properties through that process, and now the state has said, "We are allowing the districts to recapture what they had to pay back in order to maintain the levy that we had passed."
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
I feel like that's, just, just to clarify, so when we're talking about those interventions, I mean, we're, it's saying right here in our policy, it's when someone's seeking an excess of $100,000 of relief, so, which is our policy to intervene. And so if that money's not recoverable to us, if, if we don't present that evidence and it just goes forward, then that same amount is redistributed to other taxpayers who are not, who are not necessarily asking for a $100,000 rebate. So it's not the same barrel of, we're not, it's an oversimplification to say that these two pots are made up of the same sort of taxpayers, especially since we're not in control of the minutia of the distribution. So, you know, although I appreciate the crusade for tax, tax relief, I just want it to be clear that we intervene in these cases when someone is seeking in excess of $100,000. So, you know, that's certainly not myself when I'm making a, you know, an appeal to the Cook County Board about my personal property taxes. So it's not the same.
Any other questions or comments?
Again, going back to this assessment, so we're looking at a $3 million abatement, but yet, in, in the next PTAL, it's contingent on a 5%. Is there anything this board can do to levy less than that PTAL cap of 5% and still kind of match the projections that you're providing?
Well, I would say it's difficult to look at a two-year abatement strategy at this point in time. You could defer the recommended abatement and plan to do it next year instead. You could lower it and make a plan to do something different next year, but again, next year will bring a whole new financial picture, right?
Right, we may have two years of 5% and not 522, right.
You could have 500.
Right. So, right, we don't have any feel for that, but we-
There's no crystal ball.
Right, I understand. But I do know that we historically have tried to level this out and not have big spikes, and, and going from .3 to 5 is a big spike.
Yes, it is.
Did you have, did you have more questions? I don't want to jump in.
I'm finished at this point. Thank you, Ms. Cavill.
So I had a question about, you said, mentioned that, you know, part of the results towards the beginning of the presentation for an unfavorable position for these salary increases were largely due to increased costs for summer school. And I know last year, we had a lot of conversations about how some of, you know, the federal relief money was put towards, you know, our programs in the summer for academic remediation. So I just wondered if you could clarify exactly what expenses are going up in the summer school, and I'm assuming those are expenses that are not covered by that federal money. How do those two things work together?
Yeah, I think the summer school budget for 2022 year, we looked back at 2021 and did an increase and, and didn't really think through that, that 2021 summer school was a very unusual year. We had very few summer school offerings, and it was almost all remote. And I believe, to be honest, we just under-budgeted summer school. It, it was, our spending last year was no different than it was in 2019. We just should have budgeted more.
Okay, thank you for that. And then my, my second question here is related to the waiving of the school fees, which I wholeheartedly support, but I had mentioned at the previous board meeting that that might have an unintended impact on the identification of unhoused students who are then therefore not receiving services to which they are entitled. And so though I support certainly the waiving of the fees, I wonder, you know, is there going to be a discussion about how to make sure we find ways to identify those unhoused students, simply because, you know, having to pay the fee was a good way of identifying those students?
So we have many connections for our students once they start with us during the school year, if they're an incoming freshman, or we maintain them as they go from year to year. And those relationships that we build with them, whether it be through an administrator, through someone in student services, whether it be a teacher, it is those connections that allow us to find out any challenges that our students have that may not have shown up because they didn't fill out a form the way they would normally fill out a form for a waiver of fees. So our, our recapture of, of finding those kids and giving them the services they need has to come from the conversations that are had because we don't have that automatic checkbox that a parent might have taken advantage of when they were trying to waive their fees.
And I have a follow-up question on that then, I appreciate that. So we're, I know we haven't, it's not in this budget because it's not relevant to this, what we're talking about, but as far as anybody knows, you know, all students aren't being fed for free next year, like that money that's been feeding everybody from the federal government.
I don't think that's been determined yet, has it?
No, right now, the, the fee waivers for meals is only extended through the end of the school, through June.
Okay, so, yeah, right, we don't know. If, if that were to be reinstated, so if, if that went back to normal, would that assist? Do you believe in, in helping identify unhoused students? Because I'm assuming paperwork needs to be filed to get free and reduced price lunch.
Um-
Which might not need to be filled out currently.
Yes, I, I, certainly, we have a number of students that fill out the meal application when they are seeking the, the waiver of meals, as well as other school fees that we would still have in place, which would incentivize them to, to fill out that meal application because that is our determining tool of whether or not they're eligible for that waiver.
I appreciate it. I wholly support the waiving of these fees. I just want to make sure that these students are also being identified so they can get those services that they're entitled to. Thank you.
I would, I would add something to that, there's a number of agencies that are, you know, helping do the SNAP programs, the Medicaid program, so they are working with a lot of families. A lot more families have come forward seeking rent assistance, hopefully mortgage assistance will come through. So they are being, there's resources out there for, for households.
Yeah, and I would add to that, that part of our certification process or our notification process of students that are eligible through those programs, we actually receive automatic downloads from the state of those students that meet the criteria based upon their participation in SNAP programs or the Medicaid eligible-
Oh, that's good.
The income-eligible program. So we have a list, and I think that's almost, two-thirds of our, our eligible students qualify that way. So we capture those automatically without them having to take any action.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, um, thank you very much for the presentation and all the explanations. Every time I hear things about our, our finances and our projections, I learn more every single time, and I really appreciate that. Regarding the, the abatement calendar, the last slide with how the, the calendar works, yes, thank you. So today, you're talking about the forecast and abatement considerations, you're sharing that with us. Next month, although I, I also appreciate additional opportunity to discuss the situation, I would like to recommend that rather than take next month for additional discussion on what we've just learned, that we take next month to do a couple of things. One is have additional conversation on what was just shared with us. Two is that we receive the presentation on facility improvement plans. And three, at the conclusion of discussing those things, that this board takes an opportunity to approve the abatement resolutions all during the month of February's meeting. I don't think, in my opinion, we need the additional month to look at, review, chew on, so to speak, the information that you just presented to us, and then wait until two weeks before the deadline to, to file this with the county clerk. And I think we should be able to, in my opinion, be able to, to take care of that next month rather than waiting until two weeks before the deadline in March. Is there a particular reason, maybe there's data collection or putting together a presentation on facility improvements that you need two months from now to be able to do that rather than doing it next month?
I would say that having the additional time for the facility improvement presentation is beneficial in the quality of the information that we're able to provide at that time. We have several projects that are in the work as far as finalizing the scope, and the three new projects that I discussed tonight, we have our architects gathering information so that we can have a better conversation about that scope. We also are looking to hold a facility committee meeting toward the end of February with Mr. Bradley as our liaison on that. So that, that would be the one thing that, it's not that we can't do it in February, it's just that the information would be more detailed if we were to have the additional weeks to, to present that in March.
Thank you.
Madam President, prior to implementation of Mr. Rosenblum's desire to accelerate some things, could, could you please pull the bull, please pull the board regarding how receptive this board is to a 5% spike or a 5% tax levy?
That's not what's being presented to that tonight, that's a hypothetical argument for next year. So I don't know what the point of that would be.
Well, Mr. Rosenblum was, was suggesting that we eliminate discussion for further scenarios as necessary.
I, I don't believe that's, I don't think that's what he intended. I think he was just looking to, to expedite this.
Right, and, and from my perspective, expedition would lock us into some assumptions that are in here.
Then maybe the, the question needs to be, or the consensus needs to be, should we go with the tax abatement calendar as presented to us, instead of speaking about 5% when we don't know what's going to happen next year? So just to remain focused on this.
We've already had in this presentation, a statement during the presentation that everything here is contingent on a 5% PTAL recommendation that will come before this board based on that cap. Is that correct?
I think-
That is the assumption that Barb has put into the model.
Correct.
The actual 5% is not acted on by the board until we come to that section.
Correct.
The action that the board is taking today has to do with the abatements, not the 5%.
We're, we're taking no action at this time, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, you stated we were taking action tonight.
I'm sorry, oh, in March.
Thank you.
But if there are other scenarios that the board would like to see prior to taking action, we're more than willing to do that. But please don't assume that we are focusing on the 5% for the action that's coming up in March.
I'm, I'm not assuming that, but I am focused on that 5% because that is relative to the scenarios. And personally, I, and I know a lot of my neighbors would like to see a scenario where 5% is not levied.
So is there another scenario you would like us to show next month?
I, I would like to see a scenario where we do not abate the recapture levy. We abate the levy that we passed for, for perpetual relief, and I'd like to see a couple of scenarios where we have a 3%, 4%, or 5% increase for the 2024 levy. That is what I would like to see.
Can you go back to the second thing that you said? Abate the levy that we passed.
Correct.
So you want to abate the full amount of the levy?
Flat levy.
Flat levy, no increase.
I didn't say that, I said I'd like, I'd like to bait it, but we had 1.5 and we had 3 up there. I'm okay maintaining those two options as abatements. I'm not suggesting we go to a flat levy, but we can continue that, but with options utilizing our recapture levy to offset a lower percentage on the 2024 levy. I think those options are significant and worth looking at.
Okay, so if I can summarize, maintain the scenarios in terms of the abatements that we have up, up there, keep, remove the recapture levy abatement, and what scenario would you like to see for CPI for FY '24?
3, 4, 5%.
And again, just to clarify for the public, the recapture levy is not subject to PTAL. The other, like, the, the abatement, the recapture abatement is not, the other abatements are. So just to clarify.
That's correct.
Correct. And adding in the recapture levy and abating- And adding in the recapture levy and abating the regular-year levy is just swapping-
They don't offset the others, they're under different conditions.
Swapping levy dollars.
Right, and just, right, and just as we, if we abate $3 million this year, and then pass an increase of $10 million next year, there is some significant impact in the projections.
So, the challenge I'm seeing is there's a lot of assumptions going on, right? There's an assumption of 5%, not a confirmed 5%, not a board decision here today, next month, or the next month, on 5%. It's an assumption, and I'm finding it difficult to debate 5% when you're making a five-year projection. 2% in the next few years that are on the projection could be 5% every year, right? It could be-
Madam President, it's not an assumption. It's a locked-in value that that is our cap.
That's our tax cap.
It is not an assumption. It is a stated fact that that's our cap.
It's an assumption that we're going to, we're going to use that cap, is the assumption.
I have not been here a year where that has not been used.
We haven't had a 5% year, so.
Okay, let's see if we can get some clarification. Dr. Small, do you need further clarification along?
I'm, we're good.
Okay. And I think that's fine. We'll get some scenarios, as long as that can be done, we can take a look at it. I do have a question about the recapture levy, just for clarification. So, if we add it to our levy, somebody has to pay it. So, it goes back out to the taxpayers. And then, I guess I'm thinking, then it becomes kind of a vicious cycle, because then somebody's going to be doing more requests for tax relief and PTAL and so on. So, I don't know what the complete pros and cons are of doing this. I think abating it, since, as you've said numerous times, we have a healthy fund balance. And we've been trying to work to decrease that fund balance. That makes sense to abate that recapture levy, so we're not charging our taxpayers more. They're getting a little bit of a break.
I completely disagree.
And that's fine. You can certainly disagree with me, but that's kind of the perception that I have and the way I'm looking at it. I think we have some good information here. You've requested more information, and it makes sense, in February, where we can come back, review it, have more of a discussion on it, maybe have a little bit more information of our capital projects and so on, and be able to make a good decision at that point.
Well, I have a few comments I would like to make, if I could, please. Excuse me. So, I had the opportunity, again, to go and tour some of the schools with Mrs. Schumacher, and I appreciate your time and effort in doing that. And if the rest of the board has not had that opportunity, I really would challenge you guys to go out, and ladies, and tour our schools. This was the second time I've been at Frem High School, and the more I go into it, the more work I see that needs to be done there for the students. And we talk about mental health of our students. We literally had probably 300 students circling around in a gym, literally, waiting to get to a classroom, because there is nowhere for them to go. We have students standing in the hallway at a concession stand that's used for basketball to buy their lunch. We had students that could barely fit in the cafeteria to pay for their lunch line because it's so small. And I do understand, that's one of the first priority projects that we're looking at, taking care of, because there's an immediate need there for the students. What else? And so, yeah, so, they're waiting in classes, and then, there were some temporary walls, I believe at Frem as well, at one point, that were deemed unsafe or unfit for the students, that were coming down as part of a project, that we were using these walls to kind of separate some classrooms. The auto shop class, no heat or air-condition, and so, that needs to be updated. And then, my final question and statement is around the 1.3 million for instructional fees. How are we soliciting that? I know we're capturing data to see who qualifies for that, but a lot of these parents have pride in the fact that they're under resource, and they're going to continue to try to fight their way up, like my mother did when I went to Connet. And so, she didn't make it known that we didn't have the funds for me to pay, I just didn't do it, or we found other means. So, I think we need to do a little bit of a better job soliciting that these programs are available, of waiving these fees, because a lot of these families don't have the same access to get to them, and the counselors are already overmanned, so they're not going to uncover that these students need these resources either. So, my plea is to just make sure that we're soliciting this to enough families to take advantage. And for full disclaimer, I sit on the Hoffman Park District Board. There's scholarship money available that they don't use. They don't use it because it's not solicited to the families that need it the most. We're talking $20,000 to pay for a kid to join a Hoffman Park District basketball team or hockey team. And so, these funds are not being utilized at all, and their only way to advertise it is on their website. So, I just think we need to do a better job of getting out and soliciting that we have these funds for the families.
Yeah, and the way that we would go about that, just to provide some clarification, is the fee would not be assessed in the first place. So, when someone goes to register their child for school for the coming year, where they would normally have $170 instructional fee, that charge will never be applied. It would be completely waived for every student on day one at the time of registration, so that we would not have students that would be in that situation.
Perfect. And again, thank you for your presentation. It's always thorough.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have one more comment, and more of a thank you. In looking at the slide on utilization of the two-year budget surplus, and just even the conversation about improving the ventilation in our applied technology areas, I remember the very first time I went to Palatine High School, and went into their applied science area, and was very surprised to see the lack of proper ventilation in their shop area, and the health and safety impact and concern that I've had and expressed on occasion. And I'm very, very pleased to see that that's on the list of things that are going to be worked on and improved, because I think it will impact the lives of the students that take part in that facility. Just Palatine as an example, right? I know there's other rooms and other programs that don't have proper ventilation, be it air conditioning, heating, air movement, and things like that, and I'm really glad to see that on the list.
Thank you.
Along with that, the ADA, the accommodations that we need to do, making certain that, you know, all of our students have access to things, and our speaker systems, and being able to be in touch with everyone in the classrooms and at the office.
Any other questions or comments? Dr. Small, did you want to add anything? All right. Well, thank you very much for the presentation, and then we look forward to next month. Thank you. Then, the next item on our agenda is our consent agenda items. It's going to be broken down into two motions I'm going to ask for, because on December 9th, one of our board members was not able to be here. So, the recommended action is that the consent agenda be approved with the removal of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 9th, 2021. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda items? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The second recommended action is that the minutes of the regular meeting of December 9th, 2021 be approved. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. All right, that takes us, then, to our special reports and communication. We have Freedom of Information Act requests. That's an information item. The next is the Secondary School Cooperative Risk Management and Workers' Compensation Insurance Program. That's an information item. And then, that takes us to unfinished business. And that item is the student-user fees for 2022, 2023, and summer school 2023. We have two recommended actions. The first is that for the 2022, 2023 school year, the student textbook instructional fee of $170 be waived for all students. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. That takes us to the second recommended action, and that is for the 2022, 2023 school year, the driver education behind-the-wheel fee remain at $400 for the regular school year, pending approval by the General Assembly. The student parking fee, user fee, remain at $75 per semester. The under 1.5-mile transportation fee remain at $200 per year. That the late registration fee for transportation remain at $35, and that the late fee be imposed on registration payments received after July 1st, 2022. The price of a standard school breakfast be set at $1.75 for students, and that the reduced-priced standard school breakfast remain at 30 cents for students. That lunch prices be set at $2.50, $3.00, and $3.25, including milk, for students. And that reduced-priced standard school lunch remain at 40 cents, including milk for students, and that all other summer school fees remain unchanged as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. All right, that takes us to our second reading of some policies. The first is the proposed policy revision JFCH Prevention and Response to Student Bullying. The recommended action is that the board policy, excuse me, that the board policy file JFCH Prevention and Response to Student Bullying be adopted as proposed and included in the board policy manual. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
So, which policy, is this the bullying one?
Yes.
Second reading?
Yes, these are all second readings.
Okay. Are we voting now?
Well, is there any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. All right, that takes us to the next policy, the proposed policy revision of II/AA selection of instructional materials. The recommended action is that the board policy file, II/AA selection of instructional materials, be adopted as proposed and included in the board policy manual. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, roll call, please? Oh, I'm sorry.
Wait, which one are we on now?
We're on the selection of instructional material.
II/AA.
Yeah, discussion. My comments-
Mr. Kramer, could you talk closer to the microphone? Thank you.
My questions and comments are going to apply to both II/AA and INB. So, the sections are identical in language, so, but in II/AA, it's a subparagraph V5, and then, there's A through E, different steps in the review process. In item A, there is a talk of a forum available for a purpose of a parent expressing their concern. Can you attach that forum to the policy, rather than just saying it's available at the schools?
Which line are you referring to?
It's item A. It's line, it's-
Line 173, 174.
Can you do that? Okay. In items, in, okay, understand B, so, item C, the principal, at C, the complaining party meets with the principal, and the principal does a review, and that is forwarded to the assistant superintendent for curriculum. I'm okay with that. It makes sense. But then, it is not, that concern, which has already reached at a senior administrative level, is not forwarded or courtesy copied to the Board of Education. And curriculum is one of the board's major responsibilities. We approve curriculum, and if there is a complaint out there about a curriculum, I think the board needs to know that from the get-go. In item D, again, the same thing, why not report the findings to the Board of Education? And I still don't understand, in item D, what the purpose is of, after the assistant superintendent for curriculum has reviewed the complaint, discussed it with the parent, why there's, where there's an added step for another review of an administrative council? I just don't understand. What's the utility of that? What's the purpose? I mean, you've already made a determination, you've already relayed that determination to the complainant, but by the policy, not to the Board of Education. So, why, I think D is an unnecessary step, and to follow on to that, this does not say that the complainant has to appear before the council. Is that true?
Could you repeat that?
This, item D, does not say that the complainant is required to appear before the council.
They are not.
Sure.
Okay, okay.
Which I agree with. I mean, is that true?
That's true.
Okay, so, what's the purpose?
Sure, so, it provides an independent review with a group of people who have not been involved in the process, are not at that school, and do not know any of the people involved.
So, you understand it's a review of what you did?
I understand the policy, Mr. Kramer.
Okay, okay. So, you are comfortable with having your decision and findings reviewed by, quote-unquote, independent body?
Correct.
Okay. And how long will that process take?
Sure, that's a great question, and I wish I could put a timeline on it and say, it will take exactly this long each time, but it depends on the complexity of the curricular, it depends on the complexity of the complaint, it depends whether the parent wants to meet or not, and when they can meet or not meet. There's a lot of factors that I couldn't tell you-
I think you ought to put a timeline on it.
Just, please let me finish. So, what I can tell you is-
Pardon me?
Please let me finish. What I can tell you is, when we get a process, when we get something that happens like this, or when we have any feedback, we do take it seriously, we do listen and affirm what is explained to us, and we do work through the process expeditiously. I can tell you that.
Can you do it in two business weeks?
The complaint could be anything as narrow as a specific assignment, a specific novel. It could be as broad in the curriculum world as an entire curriculum, an entire-
It could be as broad in the curriculum world as an entire curriculum, an entire textbook. That's why putting an actual timeline on it becomes very difficult.
And which goes to my point of the Board does not know that this is going on until the complainant decides to raise it to the Board. The Board is responsible for the curriculum. Can you change this so that in the other steps, the Board is notified that there is a complaint?
Changes of the policy get recommended by the Board at this stage back to the Policy Committee.
To amend this?
The changes are not made at the fly at the table traditionally. It is because we're talking about actual verbiage. If the Board wants this to be back-reviewed, it has to be actually sent back to the Policy Committee because we're at the third review of this. So we really need to be voting on this either up or down, correct?
And just, Mr. Kramer, I don't want to step in. Are you finished, or did you have further comment?
No, I think I've made my point perfectly clear. I'm not happy with how this is...
I understand. Not surprisingly, I don't think to anybody, I strongly disagree, not surprisingly to, I don't think anybody, I strongly disagree with virtually everything you just said. So I don't share your opinion about the utility of the panel. And I certainly don't share your opinion that the Board of Education as an entity needs to be made aware of these kind of complaints from the very beginning. And that's because I really disagree with your oversimplification that we approve curriculum. We have the final stamp of approval of curricular materials. But I certainly wouldn't say I am an expert in all of the curriculums that are used in every classroom in our room. And that's not what I'm supposed to be, neither are you. We're supposed to set the policy and hire the people.
Mrs. Cavill, I don't need a lecture.
Excuse me, I am talking.
And what I can or can't do.
I've listened to you. It's my turn.
Can you please not be personal?
No.
Let her finish, please.
Attack or criticize what I say, not what I do.
I'll wait until you're done.
Pardon me?
I'll wait until you're done.
Please let her finish.
Thank you. So we're charged with setting the overall direction and then hiring the people and directing them to execute the vision. So especially because, at the end of the day, we're all politically appointed people. I think that the fact is that we need to make sure that there's a process in place that functions beyond us as individual Board members. And alerting us to every curricular complaint from the very beginning politicizes a process that doesn't need to be politicized. And it just opens doors for needless controversy that really wouldn't solve any of the problems that I think you hypothetically think you're solving. So I understand your point of view. I do. I just strongly disagree with it. I think that this process, you know, is good. I think the policy is good. I think the information that we've been provided about how this specifically works over the last couple of months is just evidence of how good this policy is and how committed our staff members are and how great everything is working. So I mean, that's how I feel.
This policy gives parents the right to challenge the curriculum. Do you believe that parents shouldn't be telling schools what to teach?
Okay, I don't think that that's...
Now, that's a direct question to a fellow Board member.
Okay, yeah, I'm happy to answer that. I do think that parents, we all collectively, being a parent myself, we all collectively have a say in what our children learn. Thus, public education, that this institution serves the public collectively as it shows up on the doorstep. But I do not think that I, as a parent, have, that that translates to an individual veto that I have over lesson plans for my kids' teachers at Lincoln School. I don't think I get to dictate which classroom textbook I'm most comfortable with that everybody else has to use. I don't think I have an individual approval over every lesson plan and even every curricular design. But I certainly do have a say in what my children learn.
You question a parent's right to challenge something?
I've answered your question. I know you're unhappy with it, but you got an answer.
I'm going to encourage us to move along. I'd like to summarize what, some of the points that were made. I think it's really important that as Board members, we recognize our positions and not get involved in some of the mucea until it reaches a level where we have to get involved. I believe that what you pointed out about the administrative council with three schools chosen by the administrative council to review it, and Mr. Schumacher's response that, yeah, that's important. So it is taking a look at it. We are not, our administration is not afraid to have somebody take a look at what we're reviewing and what we're doing. I think that's really important. And as a Board, you know, that's what we desire. That's what we really need. So I'm comfortable with the policy the way it is. When things, you know, need to come before us, then they do come before us. Is there any other comment?
Yes, I'd like to commend the Policy Committee for shortening some of the process. Obviously, they've gone straight to the principal as the initial point of contact for the parents. And they've also directed, basically, the Board is going to vote to say that when a Board member gets a complaint, we go to the principal, not the superintendent or anybody else. But we basically go to the principal of the school where that student is. Which, again, in some cases, we get some confidential complaints. And then I don't know how the principal is supposed to follow up with that. But it's something that isn't really addressed in this process. It requires complete disclosure with a form for follow-up, which I think is kind of a glaring challenge for a lot of parents who don't want, or, you know, for whatever reason, they fear, you know, pushback or repercussions from speaking up. And we can't improve if we can't get that feedback without parents fearing repercussion. I would like to see the form easily available. Because even if I direct a complaining parent back to the principal, they have this additional step of, you know, reaching out to the principal's office to find this form. We have everything under the sun. I mean, I can email the vaccination certifications of my children electronically. But a parent, I can't tell them, hey, just go to this page on the website, and you can find the form and then submit it or email it to the principal. I think that that form should be easily accessible and available if it's part of our policy. Regarding the panel, I think that's redundant because I think that review is done when material is recommended initially for the Board to approve. And that's where all of that should be captured as far as the study of the matter. Coming back after the fact to re-study something that should have been done before it was recommended to the Board doesn't really make too much sense to me. But I'll concede point D if we can make these forms easily available and we have a mechanism for anonymity in some of the issues.
Is it possible to have that form available? How is it available?
Yes, we can put it upright with the policy.
Okay, and is it available at the schools? And will we let the administration there and the staff, the administrative assistants, so they know where it is and so on?
Absolutely.
And how would anonymous complaints be handled?
In the same way, following everything that we can. So certainly, if you go to...
Because this is all in resolution with an individual, not necessarily independent material.
So B, line 178. Upon receipt of a written sign concerning the principal should conduct an investigation to evaluate the concern. During the process, the principal may include a teacher and department chair. So obviously...
If it's anonymous, it's not going to be signed.
Agreed. But what I would say is, we're going to follow through on investigating any situation that we get.
The problem is, they wouldn't be able to communicate back.
Right.
So the bare minimum is a principal review.
But they could review it.
Right, we're going to review it. We're going to follow.
And I think that kind of goes back to Mr. Kramer's point. Just, you know, even if it's an annual report that says, you know, in the last 12 months or even during the school year between August and May, we received three forms related to the board policy. And then, you know, these were resolved in some way. I think that would help because there's got to be some kind of accountability. And like I said, some parents are afraid that their children will see, whether it's founded or not, everybody here has been, you know, in the education system long enough to know that there are a lot of parents that just don't want to be identified.
And that would be a valid request, I would say, of finding out at, you know, at the end of the year, what's transpired. And Dr. Small, can you do that? Okay, all right, thank you. Any other discussions?
So one of the first things I learned when I joined this School Board of Education was chain of command. One of the very first things that someone talked to me about when I was becoming a Board member. And I think that the Board of Education is a governing body. And the teachers and administration are the administrators and the operators of the school district. And yes, I would love to know anytime someone complains about anything, right? Anything. I want to know if they're complaining about staff. I want to know if they're complaining about the way we do things, the educational materials, the facilities we have. Those are great for us to know about so that we can communicate that properly within the chain of command, right? And that's one of the reasons why I'm glad to see that the principal is involved at the lowest level. Maybe the teacher first, depending on the relationship. But the principal is in charge of that school and what's going on in that school. And I'm sure that if any principal had an issue with instructional material that is district-wide, that they're going to bring that to the assistant superintendent's attention or the superintendent's attention so that it can be addressed at that level. I don't think those things should be addressed at our level. I know as a Board member, if someone brought a concern to me, I'm going to seek out who the appropriate person is to communicate that to. And if it's instructional material, then I have no problem with representing that parent if there's an anonymity issue that that person doesn't want to be exposed and serve as kind of, if necessary, a go-between between our community members and the administration to address these issues and be able to communicate back any resolution or action or questions and those kinds of things. So I think we need to continue to be aware of chain of command when it comes to these types of things and what our roles and responsibilities are.
And completely echo that. Just, I would caution interjecting yourself as an agent for a parent because if the process gets to item E, you may be in conflict of interest.
I truly believe that we need to help our community members if they have concerns or they have issues. But we do have to direct them to the right person and have them advocate more on their behalf. We can possibly be with them for a conversation if they're hesitant with the principal or so on. However, we need to take a step back. Okay, any other questions in regards to this? All right, if there's no other discussion, then may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Kramer.
No.
Mr. McGowan.
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski.
No, with the caveat that this goes back to policy and what we discussed is picked up and brought back.
That's not what we can throw into this. You know, it's a motion of either voting for it the way it is or voting it down. And we did have, Dr. Small has been taking some notes to be able to do the certain things that we can address, such as the form, its availability, things of that nature. Okay, I apologize.
That was a no.
Are you, you're a no, or?
I'm under the understanding that additional language needs to be placed in here to capture what we provided to Dr. Small, so...
Are you a yes or a no for the way that this is?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Yes.
Mr. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Cavill.
Yes.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. All right, thank you. That brings us to the next policy. And the recommended action is that the board policy file, INB, Teaching About Controversial Issues, be adopted as proposed and included in the board policy manual. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Again, I think that this policy is the Board's direction to the administration. And if we wanted an annual report, that is something that should be codified within this policy. And for that reason, as written, I do not support this.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, if not, then may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
No.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. All right, that brings us to new business, and we have the Winter Curriculum Committee Report. The recommended action is that the Curriculum Committee Report and recommendations be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Yes, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the administration, especially Mr. Schumacher, for providing us with the curriculum far enough ahead of time to where we were able to take a look at the material and review it independently and have adequate time. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I would like to just say I'm very excited to see the return of field trips on here. So that is very exciting, and these look much more interesting than anything I did. So we'll put it that way. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, then roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. All right, that brings us to the one-to-one program in electronic device purchase. The recommended action is that the Board of Education authorize the district to purchase 3,150 iPads from Apple at a total cost of $926,100 and 3,240 cases from UZBL at a total cost of $74,848.50 to support the one-to-one learning program during the 2022-2023 school year. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Do we expect these to be delivered by the time we actually need them?
Yes, that's why we're purchasing about three months early this year. Okay, any other discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. All right, that brings us to the five-year financial projection update. You have some information items. I don't know if, Dr. Small, if you have anything you would like to add to it? This is just information that accompanies the presentation that you heard earlier. Okay, all right, that brings us to Board Member Expense. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the pre-approval form for future expense reimbursement for Stephen Rosenbloom to attend the EdRed Legislative Dinner meeting, April 25th, 2022, as submitted. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
What's the cost?
It's on your executive content. The dinner is...
Okay, I apologize. Didn't scroll down. Yeah, got it. Thank you.
Okay.
I don't think it is.
It is.
$105.
Under...
Okay, maybe in detail.
Keep scrolling.
Okay, any other discussion?
There it is.
Okay, if there's no discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer.
Present.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. All right, that takes us to potential topics for future discussion.
I know we've collectively in our ethics agreed to try and give everybody a heads up before we bring anything up. So I apologize that this is, that this just occurred to me in the course of listening to our discussion last night. So consider this an informal, if there's interest, I will bring it formally up in our agenda next time for potential topics. But in listening to Mr. Dombrowski talking about difficulty finding, making forms available on the website, and this relates to several other times that this has come up during my entire time on the Board, that information is hard for people to find. And so I'm wondering, now that we have a new comms director, and I know we've talked about this previously, if, not as an emergency, not next month, but sometime in the next few months, if there'd be interest in having just a general update about our comms director, how that's been going, you know, what's on her priority list. And I'd be specifically interested in, you know, what strategies she's come up with about improving our website specifically that I know people, some parents have said... specifically that I know people, some parents have said it's hard to use. So just informally, I don't know if I'm the only person that has that interest, but I certainly would like to hear from our comms director. Does anybody else share that interest?
Is there consensus to have this on a future agenda item?
I second.
Okay, Mr. Dombrowski?
No, we, I have no interest. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. McGowan, what was your thought?
I second. I think so. I think communication, we've definitely been vocal about that the entire year. I'd like to know where she's at and what she's prioritizing.
Okay, Mr. Bradley?
Yeah, I agree with that. We should have some kind of knowledge on what's happening.
Okay. Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, it's probably good idea.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Yeah, I'd like to hear some strategic plans that she has to make things better.
Okay, and that would probably be good to have an update as to what's going on with some of the communication projects and projections.
And I would just like, I would like to default to Dr. Small's judgment about when that would be the most appropriate, because I don't know, you know, I don't know what's going on in that department, so.
Is that possible, Dr. Small?
Yes, in terms of when?
That would be up to...
Yeah.
To whatever works for the district, because I know things are going to start getting a little bit busier going forward.
Yeah, I'll look at the future agendas, and is there a certain timeframe this needs to occur?
No, I'll default to your judgment.
Uh huh. Okay. And you'll probably see examples of it, because as we're going into the strategic planning and a variety of other things, so.
So I appreciate that. Thank you for accommodating my spontaneity.
Okay, thank you. All right, that takes us to the committee reports, and the first one is my NSSCO. Very excited to announce that they were, Julie Jellic was able to secure a federal grant, and it's from the Bureau of Justice Assistance Preventing School Violence Grant, and it's a two-year grant. It's about $557,000. And the grant is to focus on social emotional learning and safety. So it'll fit right in with the focus and some of the goals of NSSCO with the SEL curriculum and to provide more of the needs and support the objectives that are happening into, excuse me, in NSSCO. Also, during our shining star, we recognized some students who had, their goal was student outcomes, and they utilized an engagement profile and scale to help those students move along. It wasn't just looking at the academics that were part of it, but looking at some of the other items that the students focus on to help them as they're learning, learning new strategies, learning to advocate for themselves, and being able to move forward that way. So we recognized two students. One was a seventh grader at minor, and the other was in the early childhood. So both of those students participated more in some of the non-academic things and started to take more initiative, which helped with them getting organized, which helped with them paying attention, and other things that they were really needing to develop. We also did, Julie Jellic also gave us a presentation about the NSSCO food services. We have a couple of new members on NSSCO governing board. Let them know that the Kirk School, the staff there, they prepare the daily breakfast, the hot lunches, and keeping in mind the special needs of some of those students, so those lunches have to be varied, they may have to be pureed, they may have to, you know, a variety of things has to happen for those. And the staff has been, you know, working at that and providing the food all along for the students, even when, you know, students weren't in school, putting those lunches together and so forth. So that's the NSSCO report. The gym at Timber Ridge is just about done. It's marvelous. The kids are so excited about having a full-size gym.
Can we see pictures of that when it's completed?
Yes, and, yeah, if you take a look on the NSSCO website, there should be some there. They are going to have a ribbon cutting, so to speak, but we're looking at March. And NSSCO board meets on the first Wednesday of the month. So I will keep you informed, and it would be wonderful if some of the board members would be able to come and see that, because the kids really got excited with this. They talked to the workers there, you know, they had interviewed them, they saw all of this developing, and they were part of it, and the workers there, you know, the electricians, the plumbers, everybody, they loved the kids. They stopped, they talked to them, they really enjoyed them, there was really a good exchange. So that was absolutely tremendous, but I will keep everyone informed. All right, that's NSSCO, which takes us then to EdRed.
Just a couple of quick updates. One is the next meeting for EdRed will be February 11th at 1:30 in the afternoon. It is virtual, so if anybody wants to attend, since this school district is a member, check out the website and register online, and thank you very much for approving my expenses to attend the legislative dinner that was rescheduled to April.
Thank you. Community and Family Services report?
There was no meeting since the last board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Parent Connection and Communications report?
I can report on that. We had a meeting on December 14th. The meeting was held in conjunction with myself and Erin Holmes, the Director of Communications, where we sit down with parents and walk through how they'd like to see their communications better, and the next meeting deals with the website.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to our Strategic Planning Steering Committee report. Mr. Kramer, should I start?
Go ahead.
Okay, all right. We met, well, we didn't meet, we did the Zoom meeting, December 15th, and it was a discussion on core values and the mission statement. And the core values really are foundation of beliefs that guide each of our actions and the decision-making in any organization and its employees. So we really took a look at that. They explored how our actions, you know, drive what we do. At your place at the board meeting, you have the core values that we currently have. The, we have 11 of them, and you have the copy there, and our current values really fall in the how and what category, and then we need to take a look at our mission statement, which adds the why. So we're covering the how, what, and the why. The groups discussed the core values, they supported a majority of them, they thought maybe 11 is a little too many, but we got input from all of the groups. They were asked to identify their top three existing values or new ones, or revise the current ones that we have. So those are being put together, and we will get that information a little bit later on. That takes us to our January 12th meeting, and we reviewed some of the survey data and the priorities that resulted from that. As far as the survey, we had 1,265 responses, which I think is pretty good. 402 out of that group were students. We didn't get into the full nitty-gritty of that, but we did work in groups to narrow down the top three priorities from each group. We had three groups of basically eight people, so we started out working with two people, then four, and then the two clusters of four got together. So we had our three groups, and everyone, each group was to narrow down their top three priorities. We talked about those, and again, that information will be summarized and put together for us. The priorities that were collected and discussed, because it was talked about all of them with each group, they're going to be presented to focus groups, and about half of the respondents from the surveys also said they would like to be part of the focus group, getting a little bit more involved in things. Right now, we're looking at the focus groups would probably begin March 14th to about March 25th, right in that area. So we've gotten a lot of good input from the people that have been there. The students have been tremendous in giving their input. What I'd like to share maybe is a little bit about going forward. So we probably will need to have a special session, maybe the second week of April, and that discussion would then involve our values, our mission statement, and a draft of our goals. If we can do it in April, we would probably have a special meeting where we could sit down and decide what do we really want there. The meeting would probably be a couple of hours, and then we can come back in May. We have two meetings in May where we can continue the discussion, or we may have a special meeting also in May if we feel that we need it. But we do have two meetings in May that can probably be part of our board discussion, depending on what happens in April. So that's just some future information in regards to it, because we're looking at the final approval of our strategic plan at our June meeting.
Ms., Madam President, just to clarify, I know you mentioned focus groups, March 14th to March 25th, but that's right there in spring break. I believe our spring break starts around March 20.
The dates haven't been officially decided. Okay, that was kind of the ballpark, and so thank you for pointing that out. I know that they're looking at, you know, some of the different groups, getting some information from them, some feedback, and I think, once we have all of this back, I think it will be good to see and to hear what our community, their priorities are, what their thoughts are, and what they would like to see us going forward. Mr. Kramer, anything you'd like to add?
I wasn't at the first meeting because I wasn't part of committee. I could only attend half of the second committee meeting, which was, and then I was here for the whole thing. Impressions, okay, I like the approach that this firm is taking, and the, and actually, it was great. We started on time and we ended on time. It was phenomenal. The, some, I talked one-on-one with the facilitator, and I expressed some concerns that I had. One is that the first thing that he talked about was based on the survey that we did, okay, but it was very high level, okay, there were a lot of responses, but there was no detail on how many parents from this school participated, if the parents participated, what were their answers across our different schools? We are not a homogeneous school district, and I think he understands that, and he said that he would provide that detail. I think that we need to know that, because what works in Fram is not going to work in Palatine, and I think he understands that. And the two items that I was interested in, that I didn't expect to hear, and they especially came from the students, and it's broad-based right now, okay, so I don't know what is really going on there. One was safety and security, and I was kind of taken back by that, and I don't know what they mean, inside the school, outside the school. They mentioned more security at the doors, I mean, more supervision at the doors, and so that was, you know, pretty, pretty broad-based, but I think that the focus groups will drill down on that. The other one was about counselors, and I don't know if it mean, if they meant we don't have enough counselors, or we want the counselors to be doing something else. I don't know, and I thought that was, those were two things that I did not expect to hear, and it came from the students who those two things directly impact. So that is something that I'm going to be looking at. I was very, I see some red lights here going off when students are concerned about safety and security and the role of the counselors in the school.
Yeah, and I think there were a number of other priorities that were brought into place about modernization, about the academics. There were a variety of things that were brought by each of the groups and given a priority, and then will build upon that priority was kind of the part of the conversation with all of the individuals. So yes, those are excellent points, along with all the others that were presented. Okay, that takes us, you have the upcoming events calendar, and our next board meeting is February 17th, and we do not have to go back into any closed session. So the next item is that the recommended motion is that the closed session minutes of June 15th, 2021, June 17th, 2021, July 15th, 2021, August 19, 2021, September 23, 2021, October 5, 2021, October 21, 2021, and November 11, 2021, are no longer require confidential treatment and are to be approved and placed on file. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
The next item is, the recommended action is that the Board of Education accepts the retirement requests of Donna Adcock, effective June 2025, consistent with the master contract of District 211 United Support Staff. Susan Duma, effective June 2023, according to the master contract of the District 211 United Support Staff. Susan Ranguso, effective June 2025, according to the master contract of the District 211 United Support Staff. And Celeso Rivera, effective August 2022, according to the master contract of the District 211 United Support Staff. May I have a roll call, or a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call?
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
The next recommended action is that, effective July 1, 2022, Michael Smith be appointed as 12-month assistant principal at William Fram High School at a gross salary of $138,370. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call?
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
The next recommended action is that the Board of Education authorize settlement in the pending workers' compensation matter as presented. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
The next recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the agreement extending performance-based superintendent's contract for Dr. Lisa Small through June 30, 2025. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all right, roll call?
Mr. Bradley?
Is there a discussion?
Oh, discussion? Do you have anything to discuss?
Well, I think you have to ask.
Okay, discussion.
I'm very proud to approve this tonight. How's that?
Okay. All right, roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Present.
Mr. Dombrowski?